... Oh, quiet.
(laughing)
Deep as thought.
Right?
Yeah. Happened to work all the time since the meeting starts recording, I don't feel quiet.
(laughing)
The Santa Melbach.
Until the 150.
Oh, 150? James, did you want me to talk about that? We had a Red Hawk-Santa Melbach conversation in the meeting. Did you want me to talk about that tonight, or are you going to?
No, I was just wondering if I wanted to like...
Yeah, I didn't know what they did. Do we want a room?
Okay.
I always heard him mention Santa Melbach here.
The rest of the village.
Yeah. You can hear it turned up now, right? Yeah, everyone breathing. I don't... I was looking over the attendance and I'm like, is something on?
I got six o'clock. I call this meeting to order. This hearing.
So, you have the Doug.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
All right, Miss Hudson?
Here.
James Coyle?
Here.
Scott Catten?
Here.
Mary Scott.
Sorry, here. I had problems on muted.
You're in?
Here.
Okay, Taryn Lawyer?
Here.
Tyler Monson?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. I'm Legion. I'm Legion, this is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever living and just as for all. Thank you. All right. Proof of posting, a copy of the notice was delivered on 12/3. It was faxed to Star News, posted at the Black Earth Municipal Building and Black Earth Post Office, posted on the webpage www/blackearthwisconsin.com, and faxed for posting to the State Bank Across Plain Black Earth branch. Item number four. Presentation from Habitat for Humanity.
When you probably get started...
Oh, yeah, um, we do. Um, we're gonna, I'd like to bump shot up for a utility report quick, 'cause he's got another meeting to be at.
Sure, sure.
Thanks for doing that. Quick.
Appreciate that. Uh, just kinda quick updates. Um, we're still installing new services. Uh, I've seen the, even my frost coming in, still seems to keep rolling in. Um, as of December 1st, we start charging a chuff frost. (laughing) Charging a frost charge, um, we're putting in the new services, but that's not stopping them. Um, put in about new, 30 new services this year in Black Earth. The majority of them have been in the rural, so we're seeing a lot of rural growth. Um, all Christmas lights are up. Worked with public works on that. That went very, very well. Um, think that's pretty good. There are going to be certain tree trimming here shortly, and usually a pretty big winter project of ours, so, um, definitely see the... Uh, they have their outages, so outages have been down. Um, still working on our new substation design with Forrester. Uh, don't have anything major right now to report, but, um, still in process of, process of that. We'll let you know as soon as, when we report there. Um, also wanted to just give you the heads up, just like every year, the last two bills of the year are a little higher from Vanguard, just at the end of the year, uh, downtime, paid out vacation, things like that, so. But they last year's gonna, heads up, so.
Yes, I did get that this morning. And I felt, fell on the floor, so, yep.
We're, we're way under budget.
Yep, yes, you are, but I'm like...
Okay, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Go back up to four. Hey, presentation from Habitat for Humanity.
Great. Well, I, uh, used to volunteer a lot with Habitat for Humanity after college, and sort of kept in touch with a couple of the people at Dane County Habitat, um, and reached back out to them just to learn a little bit more about what their process is for buying lots and developing lots, and what that process is. And I got in touch with Steve Hanrahan, uh, several weeks ago, and he's got a little presentation just to kinda let all of us know what their process is like, if it's something to help out with. The general goal when I thought about this was, one of the questions on the news, in the newspaper, was what am I gonna do to help with affordable housing in the community? I thought maybe this would be something worth listening to, so. Steve, take it away. I'm over here, by the way.
I was gonna say. Hi, Tyler, it's really nice to meet you video-wise. Thanks, everyone, for having me tonight. Um, before I start, I wanna make sure you can hear me. Am I coming through all right?
Yep.
Great.
Um, as Tyler said, my name is Steve Hanrahan. I'm the chief operating officer with Habitat for Humanity of Dane County. Uh, so we do serve your area as well as the rest of, of the county, including the city of Madison. I do have a real short presentation I'd like to share with you. If it's allowed, I'd like to share my screen. Is that all right?
All right, just give me one second.
Okay.
Okay, you should be good to share.
Okay. Are you seeing my slides?
Me too.
Great. Well, what I thought I'd do is run through some basic affordable housing information and how Habitat addresses that issue. Um, the slides do not address exactly how we work with properties and, and how we do our building, but I'll be happy to explain that when I'm done with this and then answer any questions you might have. So, please, sit back. I will be quick, 'cause I know you have more important things to do tonight than listen to me. So, hopefully, everything'll work out here and we'll, uh, see how it goes. And of course, I try to advance the slide, and the first thing that happens is it doesn't advance, so. There we are. That didn't advance, or have you seen the new slide? No, or yes? I can't see.
No, we, we are, we're still seeing the front, the main slide.
Great. It's always happens when you want it.
Chili, on the slide tiles?
Mm-hmm.
The nine dots above the main board video there.
Maybe I'll try a different one here.
You mean?
Yeah.
This is for you.
Oh, okay, yeah.
For the people, you.
Thought there was a way.
So, now are you seeing the one in eight households?
Yep.
Okay, do you see the verbiage underneath it too, probably?
Yep.
Yeah, that, that you don't really need to see, but I'll leave it there, 'cause it's, it's important anyway. Um, I just hope you can see it. I don't know how big it is at, at your end, but, uh, we are in the middle of a housing crisis in America, as you probably all have heard. Uh, in Wisconsin alone, one in eight households are spending more than half of their income on housing. And to put that in perspective, uh, if your house mortgage, interest, and insurance was gonna cost 50% of your income, uh, you would not qualify for a conventional mortgage, basically, anywhere, as you probably are aware. Uh, folks that have a 50% or higher, um, expense for housing are considered to be extremely burdened by their housing cost. Leaves little for the other things in life. So, it's just to remind us all that we do have an issue here in Wisconsin, and it's certainly prevalent in Dane County, uh, as it says, we're down about 121,000 units in the county for affordable housing. There is a housing continuum, and we like to explain. Um, there's certainly housing first and homeless services, which you're probably well aware of. Gets a lot of attention. Um, we have, you know, supported rental housing. Affordable homeownership is where we play, and then, of course, there's the, uh, homeownership on this end. So, if you look at the continuum, there's this kind of housing all over the, the county, but we are primarily, not primarily, we're exclusively involved in homeownership, which we have, um, a lot of data that shows that homeownership, uh, provides a more stable, uh, environment for a family. Uh, they have better health. The kids succeed in school, which is really an amazing, um, stat, if you will. Uh, for your interest, they are more civic, uh, civically engaged. There's lower crime, and most importantly, it gets a hot button these days. It allows people to build wealth, and that's one of the issues with people who get caught up in continuous and perpetual rental. It's very little opportunity to grow wealth and to pass that along in, uh, your family. We support homeownership in three ways. We build homes, we repair homes, and we provide financial capability, uh, training to our partner families. Um, somewhere in the order of about 80% of all housing, uh, for the future needs that we have already exists. We just have to take care of it. So, there's a lot of housing repair that can be done, help elderly folks stay in their homes, and, uh, keep the value of other homes at a reasonable and affordable level, so that they remain, uh, part of the affordable housing equation. Our Habitat families have to meet our Habitat for Humanity requirements. One is they have to have an ability to pay. We, uh, contrary to what a lot of people think, we do not give homes away. We actually build them, have them appraised, and then we sell the home to the homeowner at the appraised value. Um, I'll tell you a little bit more about our secret in a minute here, but they have to have the ability to pay. They have to have a need, uh, and it's pretty easy to determine need when you're in a Dane County area. Many of our, um, new partner families are gonna reduce their housing expense by getting out of an apartment and into a home. Um, and most interesting to a lot of folks is they have to have a willingness to partner with us, and that's where you see a lot of the, uh, optics for Habitat, where you have communities building homes, and they're building them side by side with the new homeowner, who's gonna move into that home when it's done. So, they have to partner with us to build their home, or, uh, one of their neighbors' homes in the area. How do we work? Well, we certainly provide affordable mortgages. That's our key, uh, but we do also, uh, use donated materials, uh, from some of the, um, businesses in this industry. We use a lot of volunteer labor. We have what we call regular building volunteers that come out on a weekly basis, help us build, but we also have a number of, uh, community, or excuse me, a number of businesses in the community that, uh, send their folks out on a community service day, and they build, uh, for Habitat. So, we really, uh, reach out and appreciate that. And we also, if you've been in Madison, we have two Habitat restores, one on the west side on Odana Road, and one on the east side on Monona Drive. So, that's, that's how we work, and we use the funds from the restore to, uh, help build our, our homes. What have we done in Dane County? Well, we've built over 300 homes since we came into existence about 32 years ago. So, we're 500 families, and it's all in Dane County. That's the only area that we operate in. Uh, we are part of a larger network. Habitat for Humanity International is the name of the, the big Habitat group. It's headquartered in Atlanta, and there's about 1,200 Habitat affiliates around the country. So, it's a very large organization. It's built over a million homes since their existence. How can you help? I'm gonna add a number five to this one, 'cause that's why I'm here tonight, but you can volunteer with us. Uh, construction restores committees, uh, be a financial coach, donate, you can donate materials to the restore, and, uh, if you have a business in, in this, uh, area, you can donate, uh, to our building. You can help us advocate. We're trying to get some, uh, legislation passed every now and then. There's been a lot of buzz about affordable homeownership, and we're, uh, on the bleeding edge of that, if you will, and trying to do our best of advocacy. Or you can shop at our restores. Your dollars go, uh, directly towards helping us expand our, uh, capacity. Um, and number five, how can you help? We can partner on, um, building a, a small community within your community of affordable housing, if there's that kind of an opportunity for us. And lastly, so I wanted to give you an idea what some of the habitats, uh, look like. Um, as I said, we've been around for over 30 years. Some of our homes are looking a little different, and in each community that we deal with, we certainly have to meet the requirements of the, the community and what their development, um, demands are. So, with that, let me, uh, stop sharing, and I'll just give you a very quick, um, overview of how we operate. Um, in the most areas, we purchase lots. Uh, we prefer to have lots that are, uh, ready to build on, buildable lots, as we call them. Um, we have received some help from some communities, from a housing fund, if they have one, or if they own property and can sell it to at a reasonable rate, uh, that certainly helps. Um, our biggest obstacle right now, and has been, uh, since I joined Habitat, which was about seven years ago, is land. As all of you probably know, the price of land is, uh, skyrocketing all around Dane County, and, uh, that's a considerable part of, of what we need to build affordable homes. Um, currently, we're building in Madison. Um, we're gonna close on some lots in an area in southeast side of Madison called Owl Creek. We'll have six lots that we'll build on over the next couple of years. Uh, we're building in Sun Prairie. Uh, we have a brand-new development that we had to, uh, we purchased, uh, land, and we had to build the infrastructure. We've got phase one complete, and it's ready to build on. Uh, when it's done, there'll be 118, uh, lots available. Um, 40% of those are, 48 of those lots will be for Habitat homeowners, and the rest will be sold on the open market. We have a small project in Stoughton. We'll be building eight units down there over the next couple of years for our partner families in that area. And next fiscal year, our fiscal year is July 1st to June 30th. So, when I say next year, I mean after July 1st. Uh, we'll have some, uh, units going in down in Oregon, where we built the infrastructure as well by buying vacant land. So, although we prefer buildable lots, uh, we are a developer, and we, uh, you know, we have put in a number of neighborhoods, if you will, including all the infrastructure. So, our interest is, is, uh, multifaceted. First, we are, and I keep telling the folks from Madison this, but we are Habitat for Humanity of Dane County. We don't just build in Madison, uh, and we would love to partner with you on an opportunity, uh, if there is one in, uh, in your area. Um, our biggest struggle other than land is that in order to build, um, economically for us, yeah, we have to build more than one, one home at a time. We'd prefer to build three or four, but depending on where it is, we can, we can build two or three, if that's what the number is. So, again, just to review, we prefer buildable lots. It's a lot in, less expensive, and the risk is lower. You don't have to leverage or borrow, uh, as much as we do when we're building a big project. Uh, just, for example, our phase one construction in Sun Prairie costs us $2.8 million to put in the first phase, and there's three more that we have to build on, and they'll totally be dependent on how we sell the market rate lots in that development. Um, so how do we do it? The magic. Well, first off, we have a 0% mortgage. That saves an absolute, uh, ton over a 30-year period. Second, we, uh, cap the payments on the mortgage and, uh, principal and insurance payments, uh, to about 28% of a household income, keeping them well below the threshold of being burdened, uh, with their housing expense. And thirdly, we do apply for and receive some, um, down payment assistant grants for the, the homeowners, so they get a little bit of a head start. If that capping of the mortgage payment over 30 years doesn't pay for the mortgage, um, Habitat actually, uh, eats the rest of it. Uh, hopefully, we can recover it when the property is sold, but during the course of the, um, the process, we are the bank. We actually process all the mortgages and, uh, and build the homes and, and basically do it all for the homeowner. So, that's in a nutshell how we operate. Um, I'm sure you have some questions, and I probably left some important elements out, but, uh, with your questions, I'm sure I can, can fill it in for you. So, with that, I'll open it up. Anyone curious about anything that I've, uh, talked about?
I guess I, I didn't quite realize that you guys also do development, uh, where it sounded like you said that it was like 100 lots, and you were gonna build on 48 and sell 52 to the public?
Yeah, it's actually 48 and 70, but, yeah, 118 lots. Uh, that's our biggest development and the biggest Habitat development ever in the state of Wisconsin. But it's our third neighborhood, or fourth, that we've built the, when I say infrastructure, I'm talking about the sewer and water, you, all the utilities, curb and gutter, is preparing it for, you know, to, to build homes on. Um, yeah, you're welcome to come out and take a look at our property. We have a website that you can get on that'll take you to what's called Town Hall Crossing. That's the Sun Prairie development, and actually, you can see pictures of every place that we are currently building, if you so desire.
Town Hall Crossing, you said?
Yes. Yeah, if you're familiar with, uh, Sun Prairie, it's on the far east side at the intersection of Highway 19, as it leaves Sun Prairie and goes to Marshall, and, uh, Town Hall Drive, which is, um, really the last road on the east side of Sun Prairie right now.
What's the smallest piece of property that you've developed in that manner as well? Like, what's the threshold? I assume there's a, a lower end and a higher end, as far as when it makes sense to look at undevelop, un, unbuildable land, as it stands for vacant land currently?
Yeah, well, we are real opportunists. It, you know, depends on, uh, the opportunity that presents itself. The two projects I mentioned in Stoughton and Oregon, both are developments, and they're only gonna be eight units apiece. So, these developments don't have to be big. They just have to be viable, and we have to be able to, uh, build affordably on that property. Um, we have a little bit of a challenge in Oregon, where the, uh, drainage is unfortunately uphill, so you gotta do some unique things with, uh, stormwater in order to meet the requirements. Uh, the other was, uh, an infill area that had been vacant, had been platted about 20 years ago or more, and we were able to get it rezoned for what we refer to, and you guys probably are familiar with it, but called zero lot lines. So, the units that are gonna go in there are what you may refer to as duplex units, but they're totally owned, uh, all except for the common wall, property and building on that property, so the, uh, it is homeownership, just like, you know, owning a standalone home. It just happens to be part of a duplex structure. So, no, we're, I mean, in, you're not gonna probably find an area where there's gonna be a development required for, you know, two or three lots, but certainly eight, you know, meets our, our minimum. Um, we do have some concerns, uh, as we get away from, uh, Madison, it's less, um, usually the opportunities are not as close to, um, facilities, schools, what have you. So, we, we do have some concerns about that for our, our homeowners, but, uh, there's no need to be on a bus line, 'cause that doesn't exist in most places. Um, in some areas, like Sun Prairie, our development requires us to build two stall garages. Uh, it kinda goes against the concept of affordability on the one hand, but on the other, most of the folks, uh, do, I mean, they all have jobs, they have to, in order to pay for their, you know, their mortgage, so they likely have a car or two, especially if they have teenagers or what have you. So, we, we abide by the, um, the requirements of the community as well, but we would like them to be near shopping and, um, and certainly schools, if, if possible. When I say shopping, I don't mean a mall. I'm talking about, you know, food, things like that.
You mentioned two, uh, last question I'll ask, guys. Until it builds into you, but you mentioned two, uh, when I was talking to you before, that a lot, several of your other applicants, you know, it wasn't too out of the question to, to think about building out here, 'cause several of your applicants do have jobs at places like Cardinal Glass and some of the other manufacturers that we have out in Mesa, correct? In the past, I mean...
Yeah, that's absolutely correct.
I can't remember if that was you or somebody else that was talking about that.
Yeah, no, we, um, we find that a lot of our homeowners would like to work in the community that they're living, but when you dig deep down into it, it's usually the schools that they wanna send their kids to, and so their jobs are all over the county. They travel and commute to work, just like the rest of us do on a, a regular basis. So, I don't have on, in top of me the stats on where our homeowners work. Uh, we certainly know that information. We just don't, um, it's, it's hard to keep track over the, the course of the lifetime of the mortgage to know that, 'cause their mortgage is just like yours is. Once you, uh, get the mortgage and you're in your house, unless you refinance, that mortgage payment stays the same, which makes it even more affordable over time. Obviously, that's the magic of homeownership, but, uh, one thing I forgot to mention, I'm really sorry about this. Um, we deal and serve families that are at 30 to 60% of the area median income. We deal and serve families that are at thirty to sixty percent of the area median income. The AMI, as we call it. So we do not serve the very low income and we don't serve anyone over sixty percent of the AMI. And just because it's an easy math proposition to do, I'll share with you that the AMI for a family of four in Dane County at a hundred percent is right around a hundred thousand dollars. So you're looking at a family of four, at sixty percent of that would be sixty thousand dollars or less is the maximum that a family could earn in order to afford a, not afford, to be eligible for a Habitat home. Likewise, the family of four, the minimum is right around thirty thousand to get family income. We're not talking about just one wage earner, although a lot of our homeowners are single parents. But that's the minimum income is thirty percent of AMI.
Other questions?
I don't think anybody else has questions, but we, we do appreciate the great presentation.
Well, just, you know, we don't hear about every opportunity that's out there. So what you could do for us is keep your ears to the, the ground if there's a, an area that you think we would fit in with our homeowners. Just let's start another dialogue. I'd be happy to come out at some point when we can meet easier in person and I'll be happy to share more information. If you wanna hear more about us, get ahold of me. You can come and visit some of our sites. I could even meet you there and show you around. So there's a lot of ways to, to get this from where we are to having Habitat be a a partner in your community, but we certainly are interested. All I can ask is to keep us in mind. But thank you very much for your time and attention. I'm probably gonna drop off, even though I'm sure you're gonna talk about important things tonight. I probably won't understand what you're talking about, so.
Thank you.
No.
Steve.
We bet.
All right.
Go on to B, discussion action ratifying Resolution twenty-one, twenty twenty-one twelve, redistricting Mass Village of Black Earth.
Sure. So as maybe you probably heard in the news, we did have to go through redistricting as well. So the village had to look at our, a voting ward as part of this effort. Our wards did not change from what they were before, but we still needed to do a draft of resolution. It needed to get into the county back in November, so that might just be the ratification so that all of you can actually see what was going on with this and provided you with the map of our district and each ward is something to a thousand people. We're not there in either one of the wards. We are getting close on the ward.
Or two.
Yep. Not yet. Eight hundred people in that ward. So this is before you.
Are you saying once we, once we reach a thousand people?
Then we'll have probably another ward.
We just develop another ward.
Or change the line so that Ward one maybe picks up some of the population in Ward two, depending on what happens with the growth.
What would happen in, like right now, everybody is at large, basically as a trustee. Would there be, if we moved to three wards, would there be?
That would be up to the village board if they wanna make that change and then that would probably be in Ward nine.
Okay. Yeah.
I move approval. Second.
All right, we have approval on a second. More discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. None. At.
Thank you.
All right. Discussion action on license liquor license agent change for Quick Crisp. We'll do that one first with Crystal.
Yes, Crystal is the new manager there. This is going from Jane. Or over to Crystal. So it's just a change in the age on the book.
Can you get on it?
I move approval.
Second.
Okay, one in the first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. All right, carries. All right, operator license Black Earth Lane's renewal for Troy Esser. And new for Claire and Morgan.
I like Troy's former name.
I never called him president.
But it was very official.
I'm assuming you need to do these one by one?
Yeah.
Okay.
It would be easier, yeah.
Yeah.
I move for approval of President Esser, Troy Esser.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The next two, independent two, right? I move for Morgan Manstead to be approved. Is that the one? So did you read? I see that you put a skin number in here and stuff and then she qualifies?
That's what you look at. This is the first time that we would be implementing this new policy. The guidelines that you set forth and approved, so with what you have in front of you, and you do that to determine whether or not you want.
So she has one OWI?
There's still a motion.
Yeah, we need a second. There is a second, yeah. I'll second the motion. Okay, get into discussion. Yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay.
All right. So she has one offense only of an OWI, correct? Money all went to Iowa County. She couldn't even do it in Dane, right? Which is a traffic violation, first offense. It's not a criminal violation.
That's exactly right.
So we would jump down to, are there more than two ordinance misdemeanors or are all traffic violations in the last three years?
Correct.
No.
And are there not? Some intentional incidents?
No.
Okay. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Aye.
Close. Passes. And then next one is Claire.
I move approval.
Second. First and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. All right. Discussion action on Black Earth Welcome Sign Design.
Yeah, so this has gone through a committee, Public Works actually, committee landed up with this. From EDC to Public Works and we first approved it quite a while ago to have Hollywood Studios do this using our EDC funds. This is what I believe is gonna be the final design unless you propose any changes to it.
But they should have put one of the circles on there with the fake emblem so that we knew what it was like.
Oh, sure.
But so the bottom, the bottom black line is there's, we're, I think we're gonna do circles, right?
Yeah, I think so.
With the, so it's like.
Organizations?
Yeah. Yeah, whoever else wants.
Oh, that's cool.
The bowling alley, if they wanted to put them on, they could put a certain one.
Like a sponsor.
Yeah, the sponsors, yeah.
Or somebody.
And the sign coding on our signs make it look like they're burnt or dirty and they're bad. It's not irreparable. I like this. Look nice, yeah. I like the friendly historic growing.
Is this the same company that does the signs previously?
No.
No.
We're gonna run into this again, but that currently happens. Okay.
And this was some kind of illuminated sign, correct? Not a vinyl?
That's correct.
Yeah.
What, what does that mean?
It's, it's a metal. It's more durable. It shouldn't, it, it won't like, it won't get UV, UV damage.
You're thinking illuminator?
Exactly. I like.
I, it sounds illuminating.
Welcome to Little Vegas. And.
So this has gone through committee.
Yeah.
And the committee approved it. Now it's up to the village board if they wanna approve or change it or. So I'd like to make a motion. We go ahead and approve the new sign.
Well, I do, I do have a question, though. It says Wisconsin Heights Schools. And are they considering the combined campus A school? Or are they still considering it separate entities within the same building? I just wanna make sure it reads correctly.
I think it would read school.
I would read that as Wisconsin High School.
I would say the whole district.
Yeah, district.
Yeah. That would be tough to do.
And did we confirm with the school district that that's the logo?
It is.
Yeah.
And the same one we.
I feel like I've seen a new logo there.
They actually went back. They went back to the old.
They went back, okay.
More recognizable in the community.
Yeah.
Any more discussion?
By that.
Starting budget, it's already budgeted for.
Yeah, we were gonna use. Again, I want everyone to keep in mind that, you know, as part of this year's budget, we had twenty thousand in the economic development. We had field days, which we're often gonna be discussing a little later, but it was out of those funds that these signs were gonna be coming out of. And the village board actually approved, we're gonna have a big sign like the maybe school. It's been a while.
Okay. Do we have a second on Mitch's motion?
No, not yet.
I'll get that motion approved, changing it to school district. I, I, I like what's here.
I'll just double check.
Okay, okay, that's fine. It doesn't. I mean, schools.
Um. What do you expect in getting these put in?
Uh, I will find out that information tomorrow because once this gets approved, I'm not sure what the, the timeline is to get them all done and if we can make it happen. Cause our public works through.
Probably, probably will be till spring for us.
It's very possible.
Is it public works? Have been following them though. Okay.
Oh, well, that wasn't included in the price to have the installation done.
I'd have to go back.
I don't think it was.
Seems to me.
Oh, great.
Cause the polls are gonna.
Go back. The poll and everything was in there though. Okay, anyway, motion on table and second.
Motion in first, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Discussion action on election inspectors twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three election cycle.
Yes, this is a requirement that the village go through and approve election inspectors for the next two years election cycle. It's done in every odd year. Of course, in the month of December, we did receive one candidate from the Republican Party, which has been verified and is on this list. So this list is in front of you for approval.
What's our criteria for approval?
Probably just make sure, make sure that none of them are any of our spouses, probably. Probably about it.
Spouses. Joe and Irene have worked our election for many, many years until it was called.
Okay. I'll then.
So where's their family and you're on the ballot?
I'm sorry?
Where's their family and you're on the ballot?
They can still work the election as long as there's no discussion of the politics at the election.
I'll make a motion. We go ahead and approve the list of workers.
Second.
Second.
I have to take it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. All right. Discussion action on Field Days update.
Tell me if you can.
Yep, I got it. Jared, do you wanna take the field days with Crystal?
Sure. Um, okay. I've been talking about this in the update, what's that about now? So we did meet with the Field Days Subcommittee to work out our budgeting and to get the final numbers. So we got the final numbers. We came to the conclusion that the organizations that we wanted to return the donation to, that they're each just gonna get two fifty and then that, that will be handled by them. So at this point in time, the financials for that should, are complete. Yep, so they are complete. Do you wanna talk about the next phase of Field Days?
No, well, the village commitment of funds is what's on here and it still needs approval because the committee, the Subcommittee would like the village to front the five thousand that was committed in this year for their seed money for next year.
Actually, that's not, that's not the way I understood it. I understood it as we committed five thousand towards the fireworks and they wanted us to continue the commitment of the five thousand towards the fireworks.
That they would then in turn use for the.
They would use it for next year. Correct.
Right, but that would be our.
Contribution and we would be out of it. We wouldn't be any part of Field Days next year.
Yep.
That's what's on the table.
Yeah, so, so we need a motion to commit that. No, we've already committed that five thousand. We've already.
No, the board needs to be.
The board has not officially approved the commitment.
That's right.
So we'll do, we'll do that.
Okay.
That's what it is.
So I would like to make a motion to finalize the five thousand that we, the board, the village committed to the fireworks to the Field Day.
I'll second it. Now, the other thing is, so then anything left over or profited too after the two fifty also goes to Field Days.
Yep.
They will have their own organization, their own insurance, their own checkbook and we'll be out of it.
Yep.
No more commitments, no more funds.
Subcommittee will get dissolved and they'll be on their own.
They'll be their own committee, like it used to be.
Yep.
Yeah, it used to be.
Makes it easier and then we're out of it.
They may have to come to us for parks type stuff, you know, the, the, that kind of.
More enhanced, yeah, yes, yeah.
That kind of thing.
The insurance and stuff for the fireworks.
It's all on them.
All on them.
Yep.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Freeze.
Go to that one.
Discussion action regarding village board minutes from eleventh, twenty twenty-one.
I move approval.
I'll second. Any discussion or changes or thoughts?
Yes, I do have a suggestion. At the bottom under three C, it says due to newspaper article of her soliciting money from the library. I, I didn't solicit money from the library, so I'm wondering if we could just strike that. You can keep in due to the newspaper article if you want, but.
That's the wording that was used during the meeting?
Not by me. I don't know. It wasn't a solicitation. I'm not quite sure where that came from.
But if you read three C, I, that Hudson suggested, so that in case that Hudson said it.
Yeah.
Mitch, you said solicit?
I said in, in the, I, I don't remember exactly how I said it, but it was basically, if, if, if you're trying to get a commitment, it's like soliciting funds. So it, it basically, yeah, pretty much. I mean, I, I'm not implying anything. I was just stating a observation.
Well, if you weren't implying it, maybe we should just strike it. It's, it seems a little confusing.
It was intent, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it needs to stay. That's always mine.
Yep. For clarification for future, it needs to stay in the, in the, as a record of the meeting.
It has to, yeah. Any other discussion?
And then at the, the last number five, any business that may be brought before the board on future agendas. So I requested an EDC meeting and then Mitch had said he was gonna schedule it. And then under B, I requested a presentation for moving out and Mitch had said in January that they didn't wanna double it, he didn't wanna double up the presentations, but I don't remember making a motion for a second.
I didn't think we needed to do motions to get.
Well, literally take two people we did it on.
And I assumed, I assumed that we said we wanted to hear about it in January and so that was wanting to hear, hear about it in January.
I don't remember.
Kind of what I remember too, something about January, because we didn't wanna double up, but I don't know the exact wording that was in there.
But she did request them to be put on.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I said not till the next.
Yep.
But I don't think there was a motion made or not.
Yep.
I think there might have been, I don't remember.
I didn't make a motion for it.
We can go back to the table and look for clarification.
My notes just have scheduled the two meetings.
Yeah.
So I don't, I didn't mark that there was a motion or anything, I generally do if there is. Yeah, exactly.
So what do you want, strike the motion out of no second or what?
Well, it, it says that there was a motion and I didn't make a motion, so I just at point of being precise, I think we should strike the I out of it because it's already been established.
Let's strike the no second, strike that.
No second as in there wasn't a second person that wanted to do it, not necessarily if there was a motion.
Yeah, could be.
Yep.
Okay, I'm good with that. Need anybody else? Okay, so. We, we need to amend the motion.
I'll amend my original motion of approval, striking five B, I, no second, strike that from the.
Got first and second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Discussion action on treasurer's report, uh, for the twenty twenty-one manhandle.
Alrighty. Alright, your financial report this month, your treasurer's report is through the month of October. And at this point, we are sitting with, uh, four million one hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in all accounts. Uh, a lot of work was done, um, here this last month, I'm just mentioning it here in, in the month of November right now, that you're going to see change over, um, the next two months on your treasurer's report. Tax bill, tax bill preparation work has been done. Uh, I want to bring that up because bills are expected to go out probably next week. As you know, our mill rate, uh, overall went up to twenty-four fifty-seven from this last year's twenty-three twenty, the dollar thirty-seven, two thousand, uh, increase. Uh, county school went up while the village went down. Uh, and we are expecting to collect roughly, uh, two million seven hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars in taxes. So your treasurer's report, uh, not so much for November, but in December, it will be a huge influx of money as we start with those collections. We will typically collect about thirty percent of that two. Lots for that, uh, through your treasurer's report, so within the next, uh, two months. Your other financials, your revenue and expenses are through the month of November, where we should be at about ninety-one percent to budget. On the general fund, our revenues are sitting at about a hundred and ten percent, uh, with expenses at eighty-two percent. A big part of those general revenues are in the bottom of the, um, miscellaneous that we sold on the seven. And also, of course, our building permit fees, uh, we are over, over a lot of thousand dollars in that area due to the new homes and all the permits this year. Standing, I want to report, uh, on the general side that in the month of November, uh, or actually in December's revenue and expenses, we'll see the AT&T revenue, that's rental income. They pay for the, uh, bell tower, thirty-five thousand coming in. Um, we did get notice yesterday that the village received a grant that I wrote for our ice rink. We received a check for twenty-five hundred dollars. We saw great healthcare, so that'll be reflected, um, in next year's expenses as well. And, um, something that I'm, have some concern about, we'll talk about this later, is benchmark healthcare does owe the village over ten thousand dollars in pilot taxes. This is part of our operating revenue.
Say that again, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Benchmark healthcare, the nursing home.
Right, but you, you said after that.
Yeah, they owe the village ten thousand dollars in what's called a pilot, it's payment in lieu of taxes. Because they are a tax exempt entity, there's an agreement they've had with the village for many years to pay this money for operating resources to the village. Might have not had them to pay taxes. They are seriously behind and we have made several attempts, uh, with corporates and, uh, local locations. Uh, we'll discuss this a little bit further later on, but ten thousand of our, uh, our revenue is, is missing out of this due to that situation. So I'm reporting that to you. On the electric side, I'm going to go, electric revenues are sitting at ninety-six percent with expenses at about ninety-four percent. Uh, on the electric side, we are wrapping up the electric billing audit with the PSD that's been going on all year long. They put us to the wayside for a bit and are picking that back up. And we have started the rate case study on the electric. Um, that I foresee, we will be looking at electric rate increase probably after the first quarter of this next year. And we're in the very early stages of this. This will take, um, at least two hundred days plus before anything gets done. And with that being said, your utility budgets will be revised hopefully in front of. Please for review, um, at our next meeting. On the water revenues, we're sitting at about a hundred and three percent with expenses at eighty-six percent. And on sewer revenues, we're sitting at ninety-three percent with expenses at seventy-five percent. Um, I also want to mention, going back on the electric side, we are anticipating, Lion Energy has informed me, we will be seeing a rate increase on our wholesale power this next year of eight and a half percent. That is roughly about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of expense that we obviously haven't spent for, which is why I will revise those utility budgets. Um, and again, they'll obviously be revised too to incorporate any rate increase projections we may expect. Lot of information on your financials.
Shelley, I've got a question about the healthcare facility or the, um, nursing home facility. Um, how long have they, how long has it taken to acquire, accumulate the debt of ten thousand dollars in unpaid pilot?
It's an annual, okay, so per the pilot agreement we have on hand, Mary, every year there's an increase to what they are expected to pay based on the cost of living index. It's a formula that you'd have to come in and I can show you how that breaks down, but it was established back in, I want to say two thousand and three with the village. So it builds off of there every year and increases.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, my question is, um, how long has it taken for them to accrue? Just this year they owe ten or in total they're behind ten?
Okay. Yep, so that invoice to them for this went out in the month of June, that's when we released on that invoice to them. And we've been making attempts on a monthly basis, not just on us, but also on their utility bills. They, um, uh, on the financial side of this, they owe the village right now about twenty-eight thousand dollars between the pilot, the Center Street assessment and their utilities. They are very, very past due. We cannot run them through the tax certification process again because their tax is dumb, so I cannot put it on a tax roll for them. So, uh, we're going to need to probably discuss alternative means to get the, back to the village.
Okay, thank you.
With the electric increase, that eight percent, is that going to be, that's eight percent to the village, that's not eight percent to households?
No, it's to the.
To the village.
And as I understand it.
Eight to ten, right?
Yeah.
We don't know.
Talking to our agent there, they're expecting eight and a half, but it'll be progressive throughout the year.
Okay.
So we may see a small increase within the first quarter, another increase second quarter and so on. I am waiting for their written notification of what that would be, they did not have that.
Are, are we going to put out anything to the village as a whole?
Oh, I, I think we may need to.
Okay.
Um, but also just the notification that we're going through an electric rate increase and with that, those rates get built into that. So the PSD obviously approved a lion's increase, but they're going to know that that increase will be in tax.
Just with the, the amount of noise that came from last tax season.
Yep.
Yeah, I can see if people are getting, if the increase is happening throughout the year, I can see that generating a lot of noise.
Yes, it will, absolutely. Any other questions on the financials?
Question on sidewalk maintenance and construction. This is actual through eleven thirty twenty-one, we're only at twenty-five ninety-four.
Yeah.
This is not.
I, I just, that's all we just spent this year, so I thought there we have to approve is going to be for four thousand eight hundred million change. That's, that's not.
So these are the expenses through November.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report and the financial report. Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm curious. Discussion action on invoices to be paid.
Okay, um, Mary, you're, you didn't get it, but there was a handout tonight of some other bills that came in since yesterday to today.
Is it online? Cause I do have that up. Did you send it?
No, I, I put, printed this out at two o'clock this afternoon, there's probably about one, two, three, eight, eight bills that are on this list today.
Okay.
Are we at question answer time? Yes, okay. The Lodi glass and mirror, I'm assuming that's for the vandalism?
Yeah.
Are we going, the village going to be reimbursed?
We have that made whole, uh, the, the, that restitution has been paid and whole.
Other discussion? I'll make a mo- motion to approve the bills to be paid. Second. Any more discussion? You're looking through. Alright, we got a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Was that approval or a dissection vote, Mary?
Um, that's a descending vote.
Yeah, and can we do that? Okay. Uh, public comment is not on the agenda, just want to make sure nobody has anything for public. Okay, alright, didn't want to leave anybody else, so I'm sorry about that.
I was trying to tell you earlier.
Well, is that, is that what you were trying to?
Yeah.
I, I saw it, I just. Alright, let's do reports. Um, Vanguard, uh, we met last night, uh, with Vanguard. Uh, went over the contract with Sean, um, got his calendar for the year, discussed reviews. Um, nothing insignificant, usually minimum stuff. Talked about same thing as he did tonight with, um, all the underground and everything they put in and the new customers. Um, thirty new services. They're normally tree trimming by now, but they were so busy with services, they hadn't got to that yet, so, um, that was about it. Next meeting, I believe, is the eighteen? I think. And everything seems to be working well with Sean being remote. Yeah. Uh, I think the whole, the whole commission is, uh, extremely pleased with progress. Yeah, employees are very. Employees are, are great, so. Alright. Black River Fire District, Mary.
Yes, um, we met on November fourth and, um, they reported the roof is finished, but they need some, um, aftermarket, I guess, I'll call it. Cause they already had one agreement for the payment, but they need additional, um, uh, items to make the roof safe for the snow. So there's that. Um. Expenses are going to go up, everybody knows that. Um. Oh, the, um, fire department raffle was very successful. They sold ninety-eight hundred dollars worth of tickets. And that's a thousand tickets at twenty, or they, they profited ninety-eight hundred, I'm sorry, ninety-eight hundred dollars. Um, they sold a thousand tickets at twenty dollars per ticket. Um, their goal was ten, but I think their prizes, um, they said that the prizes were just a little bit higher than they thought, but I think that's incredible. That's a lot of fine work, um, a lot of volunteership and a lot of hours of dedication. Uh, they're having their Christmas party in December. Um. Let's see, uh, they're working on the vehicle replacement schedule still. Um, Dan Mahaka is, uh, the Jeep replacement, they determined that COVID funding, um, cannot be used to purchase a vehicle, so that they're going to have to find a different category for that. Um. They're watching changes in coded relief, um, very closely because it may affect the amount of money they can expect to receive or the, um, fire district expects to receive. Um, when they, um, have items that come to light that they need or, um, would fall under the COVID funding. So, um, there's so many changes as COVID progresses, they're guessing that, you know, whenever you put in an application for something, that kind of stops the clock. And those rules that are in place, those, um, regulations and guidelines, those are the ones, excuse me. Those are the ones that you're going to have to, uh, those are the ones that'll stand for the decision. Um, whether or not they'll assist with that, um, expense. Um, we talked about specialized accounts. Um, they are discussing, we are discussing that specialized accounts might be preferable. Um, so that balances, um, aren't huge in any one account and they're broken down into, um, standard expenditures. So there will be a count for item A, item B, item C. Excuse me. And unallocated funds, uh, should be a percentage of the budget. But allocated, um, wouldn't have any ceiling, um, they can have as much money in that account as, uh, would fit in that account. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, and the next fired, uh, committee meeting is January thirteen at six thirty.
Thanks, Mary. Iowa, James.
Met on November eighteenth, um, approved bills, there was no discharge violation. Um. I think Ben from Town and Country contacted Shelley to get the information, I believe he had.
Some woman did.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So Town and Country, um, was going to get the information about what we needed for growth and stuff like that. And, um, once they get all the figures done from all three villages, they'll come back and kind of give us this estimate of what, what it's going to cost futureized. We did also briefly go over pager pay, uh, two of the employees from the St. Iowa facility asked, um, to get pager pay. And so we're discussing that now. We just kind of got some information from them now and have to look into it.
The pagers.
Yeah. Uh, you go pager, yeah, off hour pager. I'm, I'll pay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks, James. Emergency management, oh.
That's right, our next meeting is, um, December sixteenth at six thirty P M.
Harry, emergency management.
Yes, uh, emergency management met, uh, last November, um, Monday, November eighth at five thirty, we had the public hearing on the agenda and we stated attendance. Over thirty minutes and nobody came, so we adjourned. And there is no, um, future date for emergency management is what I remember.
Dade County is wrapping up their, uh, portion of public hearings this month, so that should be being completed here this week and next. And we'll hear more from them on our next up.
Right, I'm assuming, um, emergency management will want to convene after we get, um, response from Dade County, so, um. If we change our minds and we need one to go over some fine tuning, then we'll do that, but as of right now, there's no date.
Alright, thanks. PMS committee.
We met on November eleventh, uh, general, just kind of business as usual, expenditure reports and stuff like that, um, some stats. Um, so looking at end of the year, looking at roughly about three hundred and fifty to three hundred and sixty calls, um, for the year, that's, um, pretty normal year, about a call a day on average. Um, they signed on two new recruits, um, so that's good. Um, they signed on two new recruits, um, so that's good. Um, there are, there's also a new EMS training that they can do online, so they don't have to go to N T C.
Well, that's nice.
They do it all online at, at their leisure, so again, it's not like they have to be there every night or anything. At the end of that, they actually go up to Minnesota for a week, and they do hands-on training, and that's where they do all their testing and everything like that, so they're hoping that because of this, they'll get more people.
With hope for improvement, yeah.
Yeah.
You're gonna save that money.
Yeah. And so, that's the good news. The bad news is, they lost four more volunteers since the previous meeting. So, they gained two that are in training and lost four on the, on the back end of them.
Some of them are getting older.
Yeah. Um, I think one of them left because his, their day job lost people, and so he just had to choose day job or volunteering, and they, you know, they where it went where the money was, can't really blame them. That leads into the next point, they're looking at actually hiring L T Es instead of having volunteers, they'll have full-time employees. Um, and they're looking at about thirteen to fourteen dollars an hour, um, paying them to start, um, so that will, you know, that will affect budget and levies and stuff like that in the future, but that's some, that is an option, um, we may not have a choice. If we don't have volunteers, we gotta start paying people. Uh, COVID-related, uh, numbers are still pretty high, um, they're no longer using N-ninety-five masks, they're down to surgical, surgical masks, so that's, even though the numbers are high, that's a good sign, um, that they're kinda lowering that protection level. Um, the big thing that came out of it that I'm pretty excited about is, uh, we approved the purchase of a Lucas III. Um, so what a Lucas III is, is a basically a big machine that goes on a person's chest and does CPR for them automatically. So it takes out a human being from having to do it, uh, it'd be a big benefit for like when they're going into Madison, they won't have to have somebody doing CPR the whole time they're driving to Madison, they'll have this machine. Um, it did cost, um, or it will cost, uh, sixteen thousand five hundred dollars, um, and there's still good news coming out of all that too. Uh, we made, we approved and made the purchase before the end of the year, we get into a three-year interest-free payment plan, and we make three payments over those three years at fifty-five hundred dollars. Um, and then the even better news on that, um, I guess there was a, a membership lunch, or dinner, or meeting of something to that effect. Um, and out of that, um, they were able to get enough, enough donations to cover the first year. So, villages won't even see, um, payments coming out of that until the second year.
Okay, well, that's wonderful.
So that's awesome, yeah. Um, and from what I understand, that donation pretty much came from like a single individual. Um, that first fifty-five hundred, uh, they thought wanted it, and they said, here's the money, go buy it. So we really, at that point, it was kinda hard to say no to that, so, um, so good news, you know, a little bit of bad news, but a lot of good news coming out of it. Our next meeting is this Thursday, the ninth, at six-thirty P M.
Well, hang on, I'll add to that, because, uh, with the L T Es and stuff, um, obviously volunteers are gonna get harder and harder. Um, as of next year, the class goes from a hundred-and-eighty hours to two-hundred-and-eighty.
Oh, wow, yeah. So, that's a big commitment.
Huge.
Yeah, yes.
It's a big commitment.
And it, and they're saying like, even if, you know, you get a new recruit in.
Hundred and six, two-sixty or two-eighty, one or two.
Yeah, you, you get a new recruit in in January, it, it takes a year and a half before that recruit can actually be on an ambulance and, and working, so, um, yeah, getting recruited is aside the schooling alone, it's just the amount of time that, before they can actually be.
And then research and more.
Yeah, yeah. So, a little bit of bad news, but there's, there's good news coming out of that too.
So the, the L T Es would be like a twenty-hour-a-week appointment, kind, for somebody, or would it be a forty-hour?
I don't know, I'm, I'm.
Not sure what their thoughts are, I, I, we, I talked briefly with one of them, but, with one of the directors, but I didn't, didn't really matter.
Yeah, and it, it's just the beginning of a talking point, the, the, everything around it hasn't really been figured out, they, the impression I'm getting is they're hoping not to go that route.
Yeah.
So, um, that's kind of like the last ditch effort at this point.
One of those, there's not many volunteer services left that don't have a lot of.
Yeah.
Don't get me, don't get me wrong, I would like a paid professional to be my E M T when I'm in an ambulance personally.
Yeah.
Thank you to the volunteers, but.
Same grade, and the nineteen.
Same requirements, just the back end of the Chevrolet.
Yeah.
All right, absolutely. Somebody brought a station wagon out to the right. Alright, library board, Carrie.
Yes, library board, we met on November sixteenth. We were very pleased to review and approve Bailey's six-month review, it was very complimentary. Um, Bailey, uh, along with library board, has set long and short-term goals, so she's well on her way. We approved a gift donation policy that was drafted and written by Bailey, which is a nice addition. We approved, uh, December holiday hours for the library, so they'll be closed on Thursday, the twenty-third, in the afternoon, all day Friday, and reopening on Monday. Is that correct? Yeah. Um, there was huge success, I don't wanna steal all their thunder, but there was a huge success from the Halloween goodie bags for the kids, and the adult take-and-make-a-craft and pumpkin decorating, it went over very well. It was very well received. Um, I think she's gonna share some great grant news she got this week, so I won't take that thunder, although I already said something about it, but. And our next meeting is the twenty-first of December.
You're the lightning before this.
I am, I'm the lightning before this. Hey, get away, Bailey!
Um, so our great grant news, um, so we got a Wisconsin Humanities Recovery Grant, um, that we wrote in collaboration with the Black Earth Historical Society. Um, so that money will go toward, um, digitizing Black Earth newspapers, um, and making them publicly available, um, remotely, so that folks don't have to drive all the way to Madison to like hopefully get to see things.
And I wanna add that that was a collaboration of the library, the village, and the historical society, I wanna make sure that's fit together.
Yeah. So, we're very excited about that. Um, we also got a new grant, um, for collection development in two thousand and twenty-two, so we'll be able to buy, um, Spanish-language materials, which we are currently, uh, seriously lacking, so, um, that's exciting as well. Um, and we're also partnering with the Village Office and Northwest State and Senior Services, um, to do a letters-to-Santa box. Um, so it's currently in the hallway, um, and if you put a letter in by December fifteenth, you'll get a handwritten reply, so, um, we're very excited about that.
Yes.
Um, and, oh, and our adult take-and-makes were very popular again this time, they, I think they ran out in a week, so, um.
Very popular.
Yeah, so, that was all great. Um, and our next meeting is scheduled for December twenty-first at seven P M.
Is the silent auction still going on too?
Mm-hmm, until Friday at four.
Yep. Silent auction.
So you'll have to come in at three-fifty-nine.
Yeah. That's your goal.
Thank you, Bailey.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, next one, Public Works, uh, who was there, any, uh, person, Tyler?
Oh, we've got Scott had one.
On the, uh, oh. I can take the eighth. Along the twenty-ninth, I was, uh, down with, uh, grandkid COVID.
Oh, gee.
Certainly was.
Yeah.
But it was over Thanksgiving, and it knocked me down for a little while. Um, so, and we met on, uh, November eighth at one o'clock, um. Lydia Caminiti did a, uh, presentation in Sean's actions, not much going on, they're just finishing up projects that need to be done before the frost sets in, and that's with regard to Vanguard. Um, Shelley updated us on a substation meeting with Forrester from previous week. Um, there's some land acquisition locations are being discussed, uh, along with transruptors, a delay in shipping new items. Uh, supply chain's kinda getting in the way, as I understand it, and I did find out the difference between a transruptor and a
Transformer.
A transformer. Um, um, yeah, and, and Sean did appear via phone and clarified the, uh, transruptor discussion, so. Uh, that's still moving forward, that's quite a, that's quite a, uh, a big job. Um, Public Works Director Hall gave an update on the recent vandalism at the Park's bathrooms. Um, security camera discussion is gonna go to the police committee. Um, uh, it looks like our, we discussed, it's, there's an ongoing problem with drive-offs at the, at QuickTrip, and it looks like QuickTrip is taking care of that with the new policy and pay at the front, so, that's gonna take a lot of weight off of Cartman and Vinnie, um, they've been following up on a lot of drive-offs. Um. We did extend the posting notice for the laborers' position on that date on November eighth. Uh, the shoebox area on sidewalk replacement is done for the year, crosswalks, or the shoe, on crosswalk painting, uh, that's something we're gonna hit hard next year. Um, we're still discussing whether or not, or, you know, what we used to do in front of the elementary school will probably no longer be needed, so there'll be future discussions of on getting the village painted up, getting our crosswalks painted up and looking nice again. Um, L R I P grant funding, uh, Nick from Town and Country did the grant for Hillside, and Matt signed off on it. Um, then, then we talked a little bit about the rate increase, the electric rate case study, I think you, we pretty much covered that, so I don't need to go through that. A lot of stuff in the Public Works is leaves, pickup, brush, locates, railroad work, um, nothing new on equipment, the Perel ditch work is all approved, and out, uh, the, are we doing that yet?
Not yet, I did call our, um, hitters, I did call one that was awarded, um, so they will be scheduling that as fit.
Okay.
Fast for the weather and that.
Great. Um. That's about it, and then we adjourned, and then there was another meeting on the twenty-ninth, without, I'll just let you do it. Would you have a Tyler, or somebody can step in, cause I wasn't around for the interviews.
I got, is my brother, I can do it, don't worry.
Yeah, he can, yeah.
Um, so the twenty-ninth, we had a interview session, um, with the four applications that we received at that time. Coming out of that meeting, we narrowed it down to two candidates, I did due diligence on those. So we'll be having a meeting, Public Works will be having a meeting tomorrow to discuss those results. Other than that, I think you got everything summed up as far as Public Works, but it's, leaves are done, brush shipping's pretty much wrapped up for the season, uh, some of the old equipment has been gone through. Uh, salt-ready, when the snow season starts.
Supposed to be later this weekend.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, kind of a supply issue, um, one of our big projects for the winter is usually meters, um, starting to do the exchange program. Um, just can't spend any unfortunately, like everything else, supply and demand. So, there's a, quite a few trees we'll be working with Vanguard to, uh, start doing some, opening up with the trees and cutting back and getting them back to their, say ordinance compliance of being heights and width above sidewalks and roads. Like.
Okay, and then the next, uh, meeting date will be January twenty-fourth at one P M.
What's the number?
Well, tomorrow is the summer.
Yeah. You mentioned that we're meeting tomorrow, yeah, we'll meet tomorrow, one, and then, the next time we meet, you still have the twenty-fourth.
Alright. Parks Committee, Carrie.
Alright, we met twice in this last month, so we met on the, uh, November fifteenth, and then again, uh, yesterday, December sixth. Uh, November fifteenth, we talked about, uh, the field days, uh, we've already talked about this meeting, so I'm not gonna go into that. Um, there's discussion around the ice rink, um, I'll go into that a little bit further here in a minute. Um, we're still kind of waiting, as far as the elementary school goes, and the baseball diamond and all that goes, we're still waiting, uh, for the survey, as far as I'm aware, they still haven't done that, right?
Uh, I can report that the survey is complete, I should have the final by this week, uh, Friday, to get over to the school, but if I don't take a chance.
So we're just kinda waiting for that stuff to go along. Um, Groundswell, the Cooper property, we're, we're just waiting on a closing date on that, that's property over by QuickTrip, uh, so we're just waiting, so that's, we're getting that, fair to say that we're getting that property at this point? We're getting that property, we're just waiting for the, the paperwork to go through, uh, so that's awesome, that can give us some more green space to, to do, to work with, and, um, that would be really cool to have that. Um, so then jumping back to, oh, so there was a little bit of a discussion, um, around like, uh, Santa Claus drop box, the Red Hawk Valley area kinda does it for their, for their, little bit of their families in there, and we kinda discussed about how can we bring that out to the larger Black Earth community? Um, and it looks like, uh, one of those ways was getting the, the drop box in the library, so, um, I think next year, we're gonna kind of try to look at something, uh, uh, spreading, spreading that out a little bit more for, um, some of the communities that are, the, the smaller communities in, in the area, so we can include everyone in that. Um, then jumping back to the ice rink, uh, so as Shelley said, we got, we actually got two grants, uh, one, one from the Ling of Municipalities, which is at nine-fifty, one from South Prairie, um, the hospital, the medical, at two-fifty, so that puts us at
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred, I'm sorry, that puts us at thirty-four fifty, that's where the fifty came from, uh, thirty-four fifty towards that grant, so that's almost half of what we, uh, paid for the ice rink, so that was pretty awesome. Um, we got, we ordered a sixty by one hundred, and we're going to try to put it in the tennis court, um, on the actual court, uh, to be able to use, utilize the lights and, and the stuff over there, and if it doesn't work over there, we're gonna move it into the grass, into Veterans Park. Uh, the reason we're doing that is, uh, we want to, well, there's concern that we might kill the grass, so that's why we're trying to do the tennis court first, before we do the grass, put it in the grass. There's concern that we might kill the grass, and then there's, you know, uh, the other side of that is that that won't happen, cause we'll get it off soon enough, we're not gonna smother the grass before it starts growing back and things like that, so, um, like I said, we're gonna try for the ice, uh, for the tennis court, cause that already needs to be repaired anyways. Um, if that doesn't work due to spacing, cause of the, the, the gate, or the chain link, then we'll move it into, into the, the park itself.
If you move it into the park, what is the light situation?
It's better, I mean, you got, it's pretty bright.
Yeah.
The tennis court.
Either way, you're gonna have light, no matter what.
Yeah. New lighting is really ideal.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it might not be direct lighting like you would have on a tennis court.
That's okay, though, cause those tennis, those tennis court lights are bright.
And the lighting's gonna be.
They melt the ice.
Yeah.
And the lighting is gonna be better there than where we originally were gonna put it, we're gonna put it down by the creek, uh, yeah.
Yeah, there's none there.
There's no lighting there.
No lighting there, yeah.
And the other concern was safety, and, uh, the police and, you know, E M Ts are much more accessible and monitorable.
It'll be so cute.
And somebody last night at the Vanguard Commission said that's where the ice rink always.
It was always there.
I didn't know that. So that had to be over thirty years ago.
It's usually behind the school.
Yeah.
And it was there for a little bit, and then it went down to Community Park.
Yeah.
So we're bringing up there, um, Danny, I believe you made a flyer for it, right?
Yep.
So there, we got a little flyer we'll put out once we get more towards that, that timeframe, um, I don't believe we have a date on the shipping.
No, not yet.
So, worried about that, but.
Amazing, I'm happy to meet you.
And totally more than half of that was paid for by grants, right?
Yep, yep. So, so, I mean, if the warm weather keeps up, a little delay on the shipping won't hurt us.
Right, yeah.
I believe that's it, uh, our next.
One question, one more, now, who floods the ice rink? Does the fire, I mean.
Public Works will take care of it.
Do you flood it like every?
Day.
Every day?
There'll be a learning curve for us.
Yeah.
There'll be learning curve, the liner does help retain the water.
Yeah.
I'm guessing there'll be some type of reglazing, maybe I'll have to talk to somebody that was ex-former Sherwood Hills employee.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah, that comes back to everything.
Some ex, some expertise maybe.
A lot of your healthcare, yeah.
I'm, I'm going to flood the ice rink, I don't know what that meant, so this is good.
Yeah, there'll be a bit of maintenance that has to be done, shoveling it off, and.
Oh, please.
There'll be a lot of effort with the liners, though.
What about, yeah.
Well, do it in order.
Is there a smoke blower for that, or?
I guess.
Just shovel.
I think we're just gonna. We're gonna buy a shovel and put it out there.
Yeah, you just shovel.
I got my little Toro, I plan on helping.
Alright, so. I, I think this is gonna be a community, uh, bringing together to keep maintaining it.
Yeah.
It used to, years ago.
It used to be, yeah, that'll be great.
Um, anything else? Okay, uh, so our next.
With one, on the ice rink, on the tennis court, is there a plan for rubber, like, a bench for people to sit on to put their skates and get it, get on, or?
Wouldn't.
How to get them to use it?
Nah, yeah, it's gonna depend on how much room is there, um, I think with what we have right now, we're gonna be pretty close to the gate, and it's kind of, it, right now, so we ordered a sixty by one hundred, we don't know if that sixty by one hundred is a inner diameter or outer diameter.
Uh-huh.
And we, so we don't know if it's an outer or if it's inner diameter, we don't know how much more is on the outside, um, so that's why we have to back up and going on the grass.
And there's worst is just on the outside too, so.
Yep, yeah. Um, but I think we did talk about benches, um, but we didn't make any official like motion of having specifically to have a bench there, I think that's gonna be more ad hoc as it, as it gets set up and everything, but, um, the, one of the reasons that we wanted to put it there was the proximity to, you know, here as far as like bathrooms go, cause I think those bathrooms are closed right now, so having the proximity here where the office is open, people come, use the washrooms and stuff, whereas out there, we'd have to get like a porta-john or something, and nobody wants to use that middle winner.
Yeah.
I mean, if you have to, you're gonna use it. Might be a, a decision between want and need.
Right.
Um, yeah, so, yeah, so, eh, we're gonna try and make it as convenient as we can, you know, especially with, uh, people on ice skates stepping on that tennis court, I'm sure that's not gonna be great.
Yeah, mostly, it's where do, where do they put the skates on, and then get to the ice?
Right.
And how, just flywoods out on the sidewalk, basically, or?
Aren't they all mentioned that stay by the playground equipment too? You don't pull those up.
Some of them have stables walking on them, skating.
Part of the picture, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, at least they're there.
Buy a free heart room outside the fence then with, with only one door or something.
Yeah, this means the first time I think most of us have set this up, there's going to be a learning curve.
Yeah, there'll be a similar here to it.
We'll kind of take it as it comes. Uh, next meeting is January twenty-fourth at six P M.
Yeah, police, police committee. We met on Wednesday, November seventeenth. Um, the, um, police reports were, were given. Um, Michelle, uh, Vini couldn't be there immediately because there was a bad wreck out on that really excellent intersection, seventy-eight fourteen. Um, but she did join us later. Um. I'm not going to show the details of the speed boards with you, but they did speedboard, um, um, reports. Um, there were ten speeding tickets, thirteen other citations, uh, in September. We had, we had three months to go through and we caught up finally on, uh, on, um, on the reports, on the speedboard and, uh, other things that've been going on within the village. Um, perjury, Halloween parade, criminal damage to property. Two instances, there was a window broken over here, park damage, of course, everybody knows about. Um. There was three criminal citations that came from that. Only four total citations written in October. And, uh, we, Shelley asked how the Quick Trick drive offs have been going. And he said, uh, they weren't going to send in anything, uh, that was, if it wasn't over fifty dollars, they weren't going to worry about it or something. Now I see that they changed their, you got to pay at the pump now. So we're not going to have all this.
We're going to have to.
January third, I believe is when that happens. And that'll take a while.
So they were going to say if you, you spent under fifty dollars, they weren't going to come after you?
They weren't going to come after you.
Well, they weren't going to have.
And then they weren't going to.
They were going to have the police do it. They would have handled that internally.
Yeah, they were.
Okay.
That doesn't seem like it.
I guess my cup might only take forty-eight dollars every time I go.
Right. So, um. Hey, we got the speed board. We were hoping, uh, on the discussion action on police activities that the mask mandate. Michelle was looking forward to it likely ending this month, which we were all pretty much promised. Uh, this is reading the roof in the county. We all know how that went. Um, they're really looking forward to being able to start up Coffee with a Cop, Toy Tribes, doing all the things that they do normally do. To be community based police force, but it's, uh, some of our mandates are getting in the way. Um. Coffee with a Cop. Like last year, deputies will shop on behalf of families instead of children attending. Uh, village staff is coordinating a cookie tray donation to deliver to our elderly and special families that have had a rough year or otherwise unable to socialize. Um, I'm just going to throw this in here now because I heard it on the news before I came here. The town of Berry at, uh, next Monday on twelve thirteen at six thirty at night, you know, you can do public input on the new mask mandate. And it's, uh, affected it's having on you to work on. Um, that'll be held at the, uh, Maisel Town Hall next Monday night, the thirteenth at six thirty. Um.
Sorry, you just said Maisel?
In town of Berry?
Town of Berry is having it, but it's being held at Maisel.
Oh, okay.
On that one.
Yep. Um. I think that's, everything else was talking about just new cars, uh, or oil changes, things like that is responsible. Um, as, we set our next meeting date. We didn't have one in December. We set our next meeting date for January nineteenth at five fifteen.
That's a holiday. Okay, nothing. Target myself. See, um, not, it's nothing that's a labor. Got me thinking about the speed boards. So it's the new ones that we put on the outside of the town. How are those working out? Are we still getting complaints from residents or are they?
I haven't heard any complaints, Shelley. He's probably going to do it.
I just saw they reported that they were working pretty well.
They collect no data. They do all their hours just basically as a fake.
Right.
But it, I think they do help. They definitely help.
Well, it does help.
Yeah, it's a friendly reminder.
Right. And it's nice because sometimes when I come in, I.
Yeah.
Realize that.
Yeah, the one, the one in the middle.
How you can get it every time.
Right.
And I'm just going to throw one thing for the December seventeenth meeting. We are accepting donations of baked goodies if anyone wants to bring them in.
Oh, really?
We will be assembling them, uh, here this, that afternoon.
December seventeenth?
December seventeenth.
Never tried my thing.
Anytime. We already started.
I can choose.
Very, uh, like, uh, uh, egg green.
Chips of white friction, you know, peanuts or anything like that.
No, last year we had this wonderful.
Sounds like your daddy's coming to the mall.
You know, your office is closed. Well, we're going to do that. So we'll have a sign up. You can come find us.
How many, uh, products if you're going to donate?
Um, so we're going to be checking. We're going to have sixty, about sixty, but you don't have to have sixty cookies.
But if everybody's going to get one, you have to have sixty, right?
We're going to have a supplement with the other one. We don't require everyone to have ever, never have.
Sounds good.
The village house will be very good.
Bring sixty-one. That'll be one for me. All right. Number six, any other business that can be brought before the board for future agendas?
Um, this isn't really for future agendas, but I'd like to probably, probably commend Danny on her minute taking skills. Um, I've been doing this in my own personal, in my professional life. You do a, you do a great job.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Um, Mary, you want to move out, put on the next agenda?
Um, yes, moving out and then, um, E D C meeting to be scheduled.
We already have one scheduled.
Oh, I didn't see it as of today. I'll check.
We'll be getting notice shortly.
Oh, we haven't got.
The, the agenda's not out yet, but it will be shortly.
Oh, okay, got it. Thank you. And then yes, um, presentation, um, if you want to give his name, David Porterfield. Otherwise, just moving out is fine too.
And this being future, I, um, I would like to discuss, um, legal reports on this one.
Yeah, any good idea?
Yeah, got it. Because there's a legal agreement.
This would be a civil, would that be a civil action?
And there is an actual.
Probably put a lien on the building.
Handshake thing.
Probably put a lien on the building.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? All right, meeting announcements, January, question mark, question mark?
Yeah, so village office is closed January third. Since the new year falls on Saturday and we're already off half a day on the Friday, that Monday we will be closed. So, and I'm on vacation the week of Christmas for me. So trying to do one on the floor would be really tricky. So I threw this out of the question mark, uh, looking for a different date. We do the following week.
The eleventh?
Yeah, can we just push back a week?
Sorry, I just had holidays mixed up.
The eleventh isn't good for, for me.
The eleventh is not good for you?
Not good for Matt either. Monday, I'm, I'm all right with the town.
I can make it work.
I'll make it work.
Work for you?
Yeah, that works for me.
Mary, how good with you for town?
Um, let me, I'm trying to pull up the calendar right now to see what week that is in January.
Second week, second Monday of January.
That does not work for me. I have, already have a meeting at seven. I could come for a little bit of it. I couldn't stay for the whole thing.
It'd be pretty much done by then anyways.
A half hour? Oh, starting at five thirty?
How's that sound?
Yeah. Oh, that'd be great.
Okay. Let's do it at five thirty.
Let's do it.
January tenth at five thirty?
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
All right, number eight, the best part. I moved for adjournment. All in favor?
Hi.
opposed? Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Merry Christmas. Bye.